Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and we'd like to call to order the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, pledged to the flag by Commissioner Jordan, so let's stand, please.
Let's pray. Father, thank you again for the opportunity that we've been afforded to do the business of our constituents, Lord. It's something that we take very serious, and I just ask that you honor our dialogue tonight, honor the decisions that we make, and allow us to be able to vote with a clear conscience, and be able to agree with some honor, and be able to respect the opinions of others tonight, Lord. I ask that you be with us as we go through this agenda tonight, be with our constituents out there, and allow us to have a happy holiday season and a wonderful Christmas together, Lord, and we give you praise. I ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
(Inaudible)
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Here.
We have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you very much. You have received a copy of the previous minutes of our meeting. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Dodd. Anyone have any additions or corrections? If not, everyone in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, we have a resolution of recognition regarding our 2016 Central Magnet School Cross Country Girls State Championship. Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Coach Nichols, if you and your athletes, any administrators or coaches, come on up. So Central High School is in my district, Central Magnet School, and I have the privilege of introducing some scholar athletes. Just kind of span out here. This side, too. So these guys are the Tennessee State Champion Cross Country Team for this season, Class A, AA. And, girls, I don't know if y'all know, but the purpose of this is this resolution will become part of the historical record for Rutherford County forever. So it's really kind of cool. So if your kids or grandkids are doing a history report, and they need to look up some of the history of Rutherford County, they just might come across your name. So congratulations for that. I'll proceed. Resolution of recognition, 2016 Central Magnet School Cross Country Girls State Championship. Whereas the 2016 Central Magnet School Cross Country Girls Team captured the T-S-S-A-A-A State Championship on November 5th, 2016, with an average time of 20 minutes and 17 seconds. And whereas, the team members are Taylor Cuneo, Abby Graves, Emma Harris, Morgan Willett, Camille Smith, Anna Waldecker, Kerrigan Walls, and alternates are Olivia Goosie, Zoe Naylor, and Megan Scott. And whereas, this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due to Coach Allen Nichols, who received the Mid-State Cross Country Coach of the Year, Assistant Coach Lisa Goosie, Principal John Ash, and Athletic Director Mark Kirksey for their dedication and commitment which made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2016 Central Magnet School Cross Country Girls Team, Coach Nichols, Assistant Coach Goosie, Principal Ash, and Athletic Director Mark Kirksey for their successful year, resolved this 15th day of December, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second Commissioner Phillips and others. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you very much. Give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a period of opportunity for public comments, and we have one person wishing to speak tonight, and that is Dr. Anthony Kinkel. Come forward, Doctor, and tell them who you are, and give them your address for our record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, students. Outstanding job. Mayor, and members of the commission, my name is Tony Kinkel. I am privileged to serve as the president of the fastest-growing college in the state of Tennessee, either two or four-year, over the last two years, Motlo State. And my address is, I live in Teleoma, Tennessee. Ms. Chairman, members, I want to thank the committee, the Health and Education Committee, for an excellent hearing a couple of weeks ago, and then we went on to the Budget Committee, and I want to thank the members of the Budget Committee. I understand that your staff has put the presentation I gave on your iPads, and, Mayor, they told me I had only three minutes, and I...
That's right.
I don't want to disappoint you. So I'll cut right to the chase. You have, in Rutherford County, the Smyrna campus of Motlo State, and it is the third fastest-growing campus in the United States of America. If our projections hold, we're going to add another 1,300 students to that campus by 2025. And already, already, we only have 38 percent of the space we need to serve our current students. And that is why the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, and Evan Cope from Murfreesboro is the chair of that commission, they've made this Motlo State new building their number-one priority in the state, ahead of anything UT wants, ahead of anything that our four-year universities want. That's why the Tennessee Board of Regents has made this new building in Smyrna its number-one project, and I believe, talking to the legislature and the governor, I believe they will make this the number-one project. The reason I'm before you is, unfortunately, the state of Tennessee has a requirement that we must raise 10 percent of any new building locally. Now, I share the mayor's view that the state's sitting on a billion-dollar surplus, it may seem kind of unfair that we shift these costs to the local taxpayers. And I'm with you, Mayor, and I can assure you that when we meet with our legislative delegation in January, we host a breakfast, we will be bringing up this issue. But until that can get changed, we're asking for you to support the budget request, the Budget Committee's request, of $135,000 for the next three years. That gets me partway toward that $2.7 million match, but that, if I can get that, we will get the rest. Want to assure you, if for some reason we don't get this, and we lose out on the building, you certainly are not obligated to that pledge, but I guarantee if you'll give me this help, we'll raise the rest. Mayor, I don't know if it's appropriate to stand for questions, but I think that was my three minutes.
Okay, and we will remind you that his little presentation, the PowerPoint, is on your iPads as well, so you can review that. Anyone want to say anything else to Dr. Kinkel? Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Turner, elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, if you'll notice on your iPad, you should have a list of notaries that need to be approved. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Phillips. Anyone have anyone they want to add, or any questions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Steering would also like to announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board. Steering would like to announce vacancy on the Equalization Board to fill the unexpired term of Tim Rudd. Steering would also like to fill three vacancies this evening for the Agriculture Advisory Board. Steering would nominate Mr. Joe Frank Jernigan, Cindy Ayers, and Mr. Charles Wheeler-Herd Jr. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner McAdoo. Any questions regarding this? If not, everyone in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
We also need to fill the county coroner vacancy. Steering would like to nominate Mr. Mike Nunley. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
And a second from Ms. Cook. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. All right, you have before you next a resolution to approve the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those items. I find all of them appropriate to put on the agenda, and I move that we adopt a consent agenda resolution.
And do we have a second, Commissioner Serenio? Does anyone wish to have any item removed from that consent agenda? There being no one asking for that to be done, we are then ready to vote, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you. We don't have any unfinished business, so we're ready to move on for our reports by our standing committees, and the first one is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Commissioner Jordan.
Merry Christmas to everybody. I've got a few more aggressive members than I am that gave Christmas cards out, and I didn't do that, so I just say Merry Christmas, though. And thanks for the ones who did give Christmas cards out. Moving on to item L1A, General Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Resolution, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. General Sessions decreased unassigned fund balance $1,430, increase expenditures, other salaries and wages $1,200, Social Security and other assigned other benefits. This is to certify the TAC officer for the court, that is, as Commissioner Schaefer would say, an unfunded mandate by the state. They decided we need to have a certified officer in there, and we get to pay for it. We don't have much choice, but it's probably a good idea. Resolved this 15th day of December, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Piercy. Any questions or discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item L1B, we've got a resolution with a recommended motion. I'll read the recommended motion first. The recommended motion to amend the 2016-17 General Purpose School Fund Budget by $123,926 in 2015-16 donations from unassigned fund balance, $66,812 from unassigned fund balance in order to fund the balance of a liquidated 2015-16 cabling purchase order for John Coleman School, $103,015 in new revenues, and $293,753 in expenditures that matched the intent of the donations. Liquidated purchase order or new revenues as presented. Resolution, be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedule attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as is set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this 15th day of December, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Allen. Anyone have a question or wish to discuss? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item L1C, a contribution to Motlo State Community College. Whereas Motlo State Community College is proposing to construct a third building of 78,000 square feet on the campus in Smyrna, Tennessee, for an estimated cost of $27,100,000. Whereas the state of Tennessee has included the project on their capital project list with funding of 90 percent, or $24,390,000. Whereas Motlo State Community College has requested a total contribution of $400,000 from Rutherford County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding in the amount of $400,000 be committed as a contribution to Motlo State Community College for the construction of Building 3 on the campus in Smyrna, Tennessee, with $135,000 being contributed in three fiscal years, beginning with the 2017-18 fiscal year. Resolved this 15th day of December, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, several, Commissioner Turner, and Allen, and others over here, I believe. Any discussion regarding this? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to disclose to the group that I serve on the Motlo Foundation Board. The foundation is a separate entity from Motlo State Community College. The foundation raises money for scholarships to help students and other things that help the school. This money will not be going to the foundation. This money is going to Motlo State Community College. I wanted to make that disclosure to be sure that everybody understands that there's no impropriety there. But while I do have the floor, I want to ask everybody to support this project. It's a very good project. The current facilities that we have are packed. They're running classes from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at night. There are, on Sundays and Saturdays, they're having classes, they have online classes, they're literally busting at the seams. We've got to have this facility, and the question we have to ask ourselves is, do we want the students educated here in Rutherford County, where we're going to get the long-term economic benefit from that? Or do we want them to go somewhere else, or not go at all? So I hope that all of you will support this very worthwhile project. It's a great thing for our community, and it's going to be great for all the students that go there and who turn into employees in our great county.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Allen.
Due to my enthusiastic support of Motlo, they've also asked me to serve on their foundation board. I don't know that I've, when the appointment will take place, but I have said that I would agree to do so going forward. The only other point that I'll add is that part of the reason for this growth is Tennessee Promise. Tennessee Promise is an open enrollment process, and so that means that they, as long as a student academically qualifies for the Tennessee Promise Scholarship, which is the first two years in community college free, they cannot turn them away. They have to make a place for them somewhere, somehow. So, again, it's a wonderful thing overall for our community. We all know that an educated workforce is the number-one economic driver that there is, so I hope you will support the full funding of this.
Commissioner Baum.
I'm anxious to support this resolution as well. I think Dr. Kinkel did not have time to mention that there's more Rutherford County students at the Motlo campus in Smyrna than at the other ones, and in fact, the Motlo campus in Smyrna is the largest of the four campuses. My comments, though, really have more to do with the state. You may recall that we supported a Motlo with $200,000 several years ago, and we also supported MTSU with $200,000 several years ago to complete capital projects, and we're anxious to do that again right now. But this is required because the state has not fully funded some of these capital projects. And this is in spite of the fact that at the end of the last fiscal year, the state of Tennessee had a $1 billion surplus in their budget, and already, three to four months into this fiscal year, they've got about a $200 million surplus in their budget. And so, I guess my comment is, I just want to encourage the state to fully fund these projects, and it's because counties like this one have other educational projects to support, like new elementary schools, and new middle schools, and new high schools. The state is supporting 90 percent of these higher education projects, and local funds are required to make up the remaining 10 percent. But I bet if we voted to fund 90 percent of the next high school and asked the state to fund the remaining 10 percent, they might decline our request. So, again, I just want to encourage the state to support higher education fully so that we can do what's required to support K through 12 education.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer.
I just want to mention something else, and this goes along with, to me, with the workforce, that Motlo does work in ESL classes for adults in the evenings, that, over there, which really helps when the adults come. I know my wife's worked over there since she's retired. It's volunteer, is what it is, but she says it's awful nice to be able to work with somebody and teach them, and not have to supply them with a pencil.
All right, thank you very much, then. If there's no one else rising to make any other comments, we're ready to vote, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, on the other standing committees, there is not a report for the Health and Education Committee, or the Property Management Committee, or the Public Safety Committee, or the Public Works Committee. So, we're moving right along here. And I believe that in eight minutes, we can take care of the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee report. Mr. Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Merry Christmas to everyone. This will be a resolution to approve our process for appointment of our interim sheriff. Whereas the Rutherford County Commission adopted a resolution on November the 17th, 2016, providing a method for the appointment of a sheriff due to a vacancy in that office. And whereas during its regular scheduled meeting on December the 5th, 2016, the Steering Legislative and Government Committee of the County Commission further considered the method of a selection of a sheriff to be used as a subsequent county commission meeting. And whereas the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee requested that the mayor call a special session of the county commission for the purpose of beginning the process of the selection of a sheriff. And whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 55105A1 grants the county mayor the power to convene the legislative body in special session where it determines, in his opinion, the public necessity requires it, which is, he has so determined. Now therefore, be it resolved, based upon the opinion of the county mayor, that the public necessity requires it, the county mayor shall and hereby does call the Rutherford County Commission to special session on January the 10th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m., as permitted by Tennessee Code Annotated. The purpose of the special session of the county commission on January the 10th, 2017, shall be to perform and engage in those objects and purposes identified in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by the reference in the appointment election of a sheriff. The public shall be given adequate notice of the special session as required by Tennessee Code Annotated 844-103B. The call shall be made by publication in some newspapers published in the county, or by the personal notice as sent to the county clerk, at at least five days before the time for convening the said meeting of the county commission. And the said call shall specify the objects and purposes for which the special session is called as required by Tennessee Code Annotated 55105C1. No other business shall be embraced in the call, and notice shall be transacted during the special session on January the 10th, 2017. The Rutherford County Commission shall convene again in its regular scheduled meeting on January the 12th, 2017, at which time it shall, in addition to addressing other agenda items, continue with the appointment election of a sheriff. The methodology utilized at the January 12th, 2017 meeting shall be set forth on Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein fully by this reference. Any person appointed to the Office of Sheriff pursuant to this, or a subsequent resolution, shall only serve temporarily, as such, at the pleasure of the county commission until Sheriff Arnold is reinstated, the county commission appoints a different person to serve, the regularly scheduled election of the Office of Sheriff, or as otherwise provided by law. Any appointment shall not create an employment contract. Before the county legislative body votes or considers any motion or resolution regarding the office to be filled, the chair shall and hereby does allow registered voters of the county an opportunity to submit names to the county legislative body for consideration, which must be done in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 55111B. Notwithstanding such right, any person so submitted must meet the qualification for sheriff in Tennessee Code Annotated 88102 to be considered. The county commission and all of its members have constructive notice of vacancy in the Office of Sheriff through multiple other sources of information, and therefore waive any formal notice of the vacancy pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 55111A1, or as may otherwise be required by any bylaw or other statute of law. Pursuant to TCA 55111A2, the presiding officer of the county legislative body shall cause public notice to be given in a newspaper of general circulation in the county at least seven days prior to the meeting of the body at which the office is to be filled, notifying the public of the vacancy, or opening and specifying the offices to be filled at the meeting. This is resolved the 15th day of December, 2016. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Commissioner Reed, and Phillips, and others. All right, before we get into the discussion, I'm going to ask Mr. McCray if he has any comments he'd like to make. We have one memorandum from our chairman of the State Election Commission that I think you have been given a copy. Mr. McCray, would you like to address anything in particular before we start this discussion?
Well, Bill, sort of set the table for the resolution. So, at the November meeting, when you passed your previous resolution, there were several questions asked at that meeting related primarily to whether or not you could require a candidate to meet certain additional qualifications or pledges in order to be selected. And so, we looked into that. I responded to that question by memorandum dated December 2. I won't repeat all of that here, but I think I answered that question for you in that memorandum. We also included in that memo just some general parameters that we could discern from the statutes about the process to utilize for the selection. So there were a few questions at the November 17 meeting about that as well, so we addressed those as best we could in terms of the general format available under law. From that point, the mayor's office, in conjunction with Human Resources, developed a written process. That is the document that's attached as Exhibit A now to the resolution that's in front of you. That was then taken to the Steering Committee last week. At the Steering Committee, there was a suggestion made that the process be broken down into two meetings, as opposed to trying to tackle all of it at the January 12 meeting. So, the Steering Committee wanted to utilize a special session on January 10, and a question was posed about the proper method of calling a special session. So you then got a memo from me dated December 9, addressing whether you could call a special session, and if so, how to do it. And that's what precipitated that memorandum. That then brought us to the resolution that you're looking at. I know the resolution that was just read has got a lot of statutory citations in it. That's because the statute's got a lot of little things in there that need to be, little hurdles that need to be jumped in terms of notice and so forth, so we're trying to make sure that all of those things are occurring. And then, as I said a minute ago, the generalized process for the two meetings are attached in the Exhibit A. And as presented coming from Steering on January 10, you would basically have the opportunity to interview those candidates who have qualified for the position, and ask them to interview those candidates who have qualified for the position and ask them questions and so forth. The meeting on January 10 would, would end essentially at that point. And at your regularly scheduled meeting, then on January 12, you would pick back up with nominations and then a voting process. You would also, on January 12, have a second opportunity to ask questions of nominated candidates. So you, you get two bites at the apple, so to speak, as to those candidates that are actually nominated. And I'm happy to answer any questions as best I can.
Does anyone have any additional questions of Mr. McQuarrie? And what the, what Ms. Barrett brought to us is just some further information regarding whether any condition could be placed on an appointed sheriff. And Mr. McQuarrie has opined no, fairly strongly in that particular case.
Commissioner Allen. I had someone suggest to me, and I think I pass this on to you all, that it might behoove us to have someone in the law enforcement industry who could advise us. Is there any statute for a role like that? I mean, I know we're the only ones who vote, but it'd be, it would be very easy to give us an answer that we wouldn't be able to know, you know, whether it's valid or not. You know what I mean?
Right.
So it's just not our industry. It's not our area of expertise. And so I guess that's what I'm wondering. Is there any way for us to engage an expert of some sort who's disconnected from the county, arms-length, to just even advise us? I don't want them to, to, you know, to guide us, but would they even be there for us to ask them questions? You know what I mean?
Okay. So that's a, that's a good question. The question is, could you hire somebody or have somebody that would be in an advisory role? I'm going to answer that question this way. The statutes that are in play here provide some road forward, but they don't answer all the questions. For example, they don't, I don't think the statute said, you know, pre-termit says you cannot have an advisory person present at the meeting and so forth. Having said that, the position that, that our office has taken is, is really a conservative one, I think, and that is to try to only push the buttons that we can identify directly in a statute as being authorized, so as to try to avoid some inadvertent pitfall. And again, that's why you see all the citations in the resolution to the statutory provisions, which gets redundant when you're trying, and difficult when you're trying to read it. But those are all pulled right out of that TCA 55105, TCA 55111. And so, you know, I don't see something in there that would expressly authorize that, is my, is my answer to that.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yeah, I would advise my fellow commissioners to talk to CTAAS, and to talk to Tennessee Sheriff's Association, Tennessee Chiefs of Police Association, and those are three good sources to, for information if you have questions regarding along this line.
I'll add to that, for what it's worth. You see this in some of my memos and a footnote, but knowing that, that one person doesn't know everything, I've had a number of conversations with CTAAS about this process, and about the statutes, and about the best way forward. So to Mr. Gurley's point, they are an excellent resource, and I've bounced many, many of these issues off of them to make sure we're going down a sound path.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Other discussion? If not, are you ready to vote? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Hey, record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very, very much. And we're just five minutes behind our public hearings, but appreciate the, those that are waiting to participate, and those bearing with us just a bit. Our first rezoning request, 16-A017, on behalf of Joni Cook. Project located along Couchville Pike, existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is office professional on a site of approximately 14 acres. And Mr. Demosi, you may tell us more, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This first of three public hearings we have tonight regards property along Couchville Pike. According to information that's included with your agenda packets, the applicants are proposing to rezone this property in order to construct a facility for the Lantern Lane Farm Counseling Center. The applicant received approval for a similar program at her home located at 6201 Corinth Road, just to the east of the subject property. A copy of the Board of Zoning Appeal staff report and the recorded conditional use permit have been included with your agenda materials for your reference. This type of use falls under the Medical Services Activity Classification in our zoning ordinance, which is allowed by right in the office professional or the OP district. The project is proposed to be built in three phases. First phase would be the offices, horse stables, and a parking area. Phase two would include a covered area, and then phase three would also, I'm sorry, would include a living space for the caregiver of the facility. The applicant has provided a rough sketch plan of the property shown, showing the proposed location of the buildings and the parking area. Access would be directly onto Couchville Pike. Of course, any access drives and parking areas would have to be built to county standards. The site is heavily treed. Properties that are zoned, office professional, require to have a Type 1 buffer. That's our least dense buffer of the three kinds that we have. Staff feels there is sufficient tree material on the property. They could utilize a lot of that to meet the buffering requirements, but of course, if there are some blank spots, for lack of a better way to say it, we'd require them to, to fill those in if this were to be approved and the site plan approved for it. And of course, any non-commercial, I'm sorry, non-residential use has to meet the performance standards regarding noise, dust, odor, hazardous materials, and those kind of things. There was very little discussion on this item at the Planning Commission's meeting. OP typically acts as more of a transitional zone between residential zoning and heavier, more intense commercial zoning. With that, the commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Demosi before we have the public hearing? Okay, then, thank you then. Stand aside just for a moment, and we will declare the public hearing open for rezoning request 16-A017. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this project, now is your opportunity. So please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. Does anyone wish to speak? No one is rising to come forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Commissioner Jordan.
I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
And a second was that, Commissioner P. Any other one have any discussion or questions? All right, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Mr. Demosi. Amendments to Chapter 10 of the Rutherford County Zoning Ordinance, 16-5003, flood hazard districts regarding the floodplain administrator. And our planning staff, they are the applicant. Mr. Demosi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you again. The regulations for floodplain management are included within Chapter 10 of the county's zoning ordinance. The regulations currently state that the building codes director is the administrator of the floodplain ordinance. Prior to his retirement, staff had conversations with the director at that time, Mr. David Jones, regarding the administration of the floodplain regulations. It was agreed that after his retirement, the enforcement responsibilities for those provisions would be shifted from his department to the Planning and Engineering Department. Our department currently has three certified floodplain managers on staff. We drew straws, and the county engineer ended up being the lucky winner of that, or the lucky loser, depending how you want to look at it. But the county engineer will be the one designated as our new floodplain administrator. In order to make this change in the zoning ordinance, this amendment is necessary. You'll see the existing and the proposed language below. This is really just a simple change, just shifting the responsibility that's from the building codes director to the county engineer. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Gurley.
This is a little bit off the subject, but I had a, an issue out in my district here the other day where I heard of a man that his flood insurance has gone up like $1,000 or $1,200, somewhere along in there. He's been placed on the new FEMA floodplain map, and that, you know, his house didn't flood in 2010 when everything flooded out there, but how much of a problem is this issue in our county?
Well, what ends up happening, I don't think it's necessarily a case of new flood maps. There's been a lot of changes at the federal level regarding the, the rates for flood insurance and the amounts that have to be paid, and a lot of it depends on where your structure is in relation to the identified floodplain, which is done through the Corps of Engineers, what your elevation is, you know, the higher up you're above the elevation, the less your rates are. Without knowing more specifics than that, it's difficult to say. You could have him call our office. We'd be happy to talk with him about it. Unfortunately, that does happen from time to time, but like I said, with the changes to the federal regulations that have occurred over the last few years, we've been seeing more and more of that.
All right. If there's no more questions for him, then we will declare the public hearing open for this amendment to Chapter 10 of our zoning ordinance. If anyone wishes to come and speak for or against that, it's your opportunity, and do just that at this moment. Does anyone wish to come? The public hearing is open. No one is coming forward, so the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner Phillips.
Burgess, I move that we approve the amendment to Chapter 10 of the Rutherford County zoning ordinance regarding flood hazard.
We have a second. Commissioner Kutch and Commissioner Dodd, I'm sure, are at any other discussion? Everyone in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Next, we have a rezoning request 16-A004. The project proponent is Mr. Shane Fogel, located at 14873 Mount Pleasant Road, existing zoning plan unit development for a landscape nursery on a site of about 23 acres. Mr. Demosi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Before I get started on this, I just want to call your attention to your iPads. Along with the Planning and Engineering Report that's there, you'll see a booklet for the plan development for this particular application. If we need to, we can show it on the screen as well, but you do have that there, as well as some photographs that one of the neighbors in the area had submitted during the Planning Commission meeting. Just to alert you to those two files that are there. The subject property was used for a rock extraction, basically a borrow pit, during the widening of State Route 99 back in 2008. Since that time, the property has remained vacant, except for the structures that were built, used during that widening project. The applicant came to meet with staff back in June of 2015. He currently occupies property with his business at, on Long Highway 99, and plans to move his operations to the subject property. After speaking with the applicant, staff advised that a rezoning would be required, and we also recommended commercial services zoning as that particular designation that could best accommodate the type of business that he was proposing to operate. Several months had gone by after that, and staff started receiving complaints regarding activity on the subject property. After investigating the complaint, it was discovered that the applicant had begun to move his business to the subject property, and had also erected structures without zoning authorization, site plan approval, or building permits. Stop work order was issued by the county's Building and Coes Department for the building construction, and the planning and engineering staff met with the applicant soon after in order to discuss possible remedies to what was now a zoning violation. Most of the concerns relate to staff concern, the noise that was being created by the applicant's use of a dirt-rock separator on the property. Originally, the applicant had this particular activity in the pattern book that's, that's on your iPads, but it's been removed. The intent behind it was to, there was a large pile of rock and dirt left over from when the state was doing a lot of their work. He was trying to separate the dirt out so he could use the dirt in his business and then dispose of the rock. Unfortunately, again, that was creating a lot of noise. He was looking to do that until the, basically the pile was gone. After hearing a lot of the opposition to that, ultimately with the proposal before you today, he decided to remove that part from his pattern book, so you won't see that in there anymore. There were also some concerns regarding the possible use of the property should the applicant ever sell the property into future and traffic concerns, which is why he ended up going with a plan development approach. That was at staff's recommendation, as opposed to the commercial services zoning he was looking for originally. The applicant, again, has that pattern book, it's on your iPads. The applicant is proposing about 15 employees, would have operating hours from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Activities would be included but not be limited to loading of materials, topsoil, trees, mulch, et cetera, onto, using skid steers, excuse me, onto trucks for delivery to various job sites. There would not be a retail component to this business on the property, and they would also have concrete bins in order to contain the mulch. Access would be from Mount Pleasant Road. There are two access points, I guess, one a northern, one a southern, really just the best, easiest way to think of them. Per staff suggestion, due to the fact that the northern access is closer to several homes that were constructed across the eastern side of Mount Pleasant Road, the applicant did state they would utilize the southern access for the majority of the traffic's, site's traffic. Of course, parking areas, access drives would have to be upgraded consistent with our regulations. Buffering would be required consistent as well with our ordinance. The site is very heavily wooded, with only a portion used for the, a borrow pit when it was being used in that manner. The applicant had indicated that a lot of the trees and, and material would remain on site, so chances are buffering would not be required beyond what was already there. And of course, the performance standards, again, would apply. You can see in the staff report, staff's recommendation, and the Planning Commission's recommendation, from my standpoint, from staff's standpoint, despite the manner which this came forward, staff still thinks that this is probably one of the best uses for the property, just because of the fact that the septic soils on the property are limited at best, and the state's use of the property as a borrow pit really makes single-family use highly unlikely for this. It's not zoned commercially, but the Champions Run Golf Course is located in close proximity to the property. There were a number of people who spoke during the public hearing regarding this application. There were a lot of concerns that were raised in regards to traffic from the proposed development and conditions of the roads in the area, noise issues, lack of soil sites for septic use, and possible property value concerns. Ultimately, after much discussion, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial this application by a vote of seven, four, and three against. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if anyone's here representing the applicant. I don't see him, but I'm not sure if he sent somebody in his stead.
Questions of Mr. Demosi. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one, Doug, that concerns me, and correct me if I'm not reading this correctly. Did the applicant go ahead and start moving in his business without any approval?
Essentially, yes. That, that, I mean, that's, that's what happened.
Okay, yeah, I just, that concerns me, number one. Number two, I noticed there was conversation about a zoning violation. Was anything ever done related to a code violation, or did he?
Well, he was, a stop worker was placed on the, on it, and then that's when he came in, made application for the zoning of the property.
Right, so we went, kind of went in a backward order than what he should have done. I just, that is very concerning to me, and that's why I want to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Demosi before the public hearing? All right, thank you, Mr. Demosi. Now we will declare the public hearing for zoning request 16A004 open for those that wish to speak for or against this application. Now is your opportunity. Come forward and give us your name and address, and make your comments.
I recently bought property and build a house at 14860 Mount Pleasant Road, which is right across the street from the site. I also spoke at the last hearing. The concerns, as Mr. Demosi related to you, were, were my concerns. When I bought the property, it was zoned as light residential. I would not have bought the property if it was zoned commercial. The property, as I looked at it, there is no other commercial property around there except a golf course, which is aesthetically pleasing to me versus a landscaping nursery. At the time, I was told there wouldn't ever be anything there because it was solid rock. You couldn't have a septic system. And then miraculously, now there's a perk site, apparently. Don't know how that happened on solid rock, but that just appeared. So my concern is the property value. I know there's no appraisers within, within this group, but I pretty much, in my mind, it's sure not going to help the property appreciate. So that just leaves depreciation, as far as I'm concerned. The noise issue, skid steers, trucks, forklifts, you know, I don't like waking up to skid steers. I don't know about you. We don't know about weekends, holidays, if the site's going to be in use then. The third thing on my list is safety. It is a very, very narrow street. We've already had two, two mailboxes taken out already, mine and the neighbor's, because the turn in the street is so narrow, and with him using trucks, even semi-trucks to bring product in, as well as trailers on, on trucks, it's, it's bring product in, as well as trailers on trucks, it's going to be dangerous. My last comment is the trust issue. You brought up the point about no building permit, just doing whatever he wanted to do. You know, I paid my taxes for my building permits, for my septic permits, and to my knowledge, I don't think there's anything ever been paid or actually completed on that. So my question is, you know, is he going to do what he says he's going to do like he did with the building permits? That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? Now, please come forward.
I live at 14920 Mount Pleasant Road, across from one of the biggest entrances. I get to see everything go in and out. As of right now, he still has stuff going in and out, with Greenbrier on the side and Skidsters. Actually had a tractor-trailer truck go up there probably three weeks ago by huge trucking. I would just like to know exactly what he is allowed to do through the business. Thank y'all.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, I'm James Robinson, and I live at 14970, and I just moved in last week from up Las Casas area. And if I'd known this was going to be turned into a commercial road, I would have probably not bought down there. It's a beautiful area, beautiful homes down there, and I work construction. I know how those machines all sound and everything, and I don't want to have to be listening to that. I moved down there, get some out away from the city, everything, for peace and quiet, and I don't want to have to put up with all the road traffic. That's going to be the main concern for me, the road traffic and the noise. So, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward. Okay, I don't see anyone else coming to forward, therefore we're going to close the public hearing. And is there a motion? Harriet.
Mr. Chairman, with the same reasons that we had for the planning commission to deny this at their meeting, I move for a denial of this property.
Second Commissioner Jordan, further discussion. Okay, this has a little bit of uncertainty about it, so we're going to roll call vote. Did you want to say something, Mr. Dodd?
Doug, what can be done there now under current zoning? As far as equipment, skid steers running for certain purposes?
Well, I mean, historically, excuse me, historically, whenever a zoning issue, like a zoning violation, is in process, we hold all enforcement actions in abeyance. Now, if this is denied tonight and he no longer has approval, we'll get with our building codes officials and our zoning enforcement officers and give him a date certain as to when to have that material off the site. So that's, I mean, really, he doesn't have permission to do anything. It's just while he's in process, everything's kind of held in abeyance.
If it's not rezoned under its current zoning, what rights does a property owner have to store materials or run heavy equipment?
Well, if it's commercial activity, there's none, really. It would be according to whatever is allowed in the zoning ordinance for the RL district, which is predominantly residential use. I mean, you can have other uses like community assembly, churches, things like that, but you have to have site plans and things for all that, which there is none for this site. As far as storing equipment there for commercial use, even if he's not necessarily running the business there, he has it somewhere else, he just couldn't start storing equipment there because that would still be non-residential storage on residential property.
So if it were a farmer doing agriculture tasks, it would be allowed?
Yes, sir. Agricultural activities are permitted. That's correct.
Could be equipment running?
Yes, I mean, that's...
Someone could cut down the trees and stack the trees and store the tree. Could be activity.
If it's all agriculturally related, and it meets the definitions of agriculture according to state definitions, then yes, they could do that.
And... All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, so we're ready to vote, so please cast your votes. You're voting to deny this request. If you vote yes. Are we on? No one has been able to vote yet, Brian? Not responding, just bear with us a moment, please. We will reboot the system somehow. All right, are we ready to record the votes then, Brian? Everyone has voted, and a yes vote is to deny. Did I give you an opportunity, Ms. Clerk, to read your thing? Sorry.
I can take that now. Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Motion passed, and the rezoning request is denied. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Demosi. Is there any other business to come before this body? Oh, this is unusual. Well, that being said, Merry Christmas, and we hope we all have another great year like we've had this year so far. Good night.